Hey David.
Morning sir.
We got you on the speakerphone here, so we're just about to start.
Another day. Okay, uh, we're gonna start.
Call meeting, order.
I pledge allegiance to the fighting of the United States of America. And to the recall of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to convene as the Board of County Commissioners. Approval of the agenda. I think we got one, gotta add one thing that was kinda pushed aside, looks like the claims list. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I so move.
Yeah, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Got a second. I go roll call. Hogard, yes. Schlomer.
Yes.
Martin.
Here.
Halk.
Yes.
Schilling, yes, motion passed. Public forum, issues none. Uh, let's go to the claims.
They have one thing on the claims, they have a tagle for this trailer. I think we should wait on the claims list until we decide a deal on the agenda to consider motion approved purchase of trailer for Indian Hallway. But it's on the claims list, so we could either hold this out and approve the claims list, or just wait with all the claims till after, before the claims approval down till after that.
We can approve the rest of the claims and we'll just hold down until we get to that one on the agenda.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve all the claims with the exception of Chair Charles Monn for the trailer.
I'll second. They got a motion on the floor. Hand a second. Any more discussion? Here and done. Roll call. Hogard.
Yes.
Schlomer.
Yes.
Martin.
Here.
Halk.
Yes.
Schilling, yes, motion passed. Okay, number six, consider motion to approve the emergency management office lease with the city of Mowbridge. You guys all looked that over.
I so move.
Okay, I got a, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I have a second.
Got a second. Any other discussion on that? Here and done, roll call. Hogard.
Yes.
Schlomer.
Yes.
Martin.
Here.
Halk.
Yes.
Schilling, yes, motion passed. Okay, we'll go to number seven, consider motion to update personnel policy. Uh, I know we did a lot of that at the last meeting, but I was just looking at one thing that we had talked about. It has to do on the holidays where it says on there, "All other days proclaimed as legal non-working holidays by the President of the U.S. or the Governor of South Dakota." You know, back in their policy, we got the policy, it must've been probably when I first started. Why, why it got taken out there, but it says optional? What would be so wrong with putting that right back in, I don't think you're finding, this is the one Jim, that I'm... I had to get it from here, but, I don't know. You know.
When was that revised, huh? When was that revised, you know? The one I gave you?
No.
Oh.
This is one that I, I had to have gotten it probably right away when I started. But, I don't know, to me it's... We should have an option. I know Ma- Campbell County does it, they have option in theirs too. I don't think that we have to always agree with, with the governor.
They agree with that, you don't necessarily have to.
Schlomer and Martin, are you, can you hear me on that?
Yeah.
I don't know Jim.
What section is that, sir?
It is 712. See, I've got... I got the revision in 2015. And while you're looking up that, I would like to throw one other thing out there too. I, I think that this other one that I'm gonna bring up, I think is, is making it way more fair for the people in the courthouse. So I'll be honest with you, I, I really have hard feelings when, when, uh, and I'm not picking on the highway department, but when all of a sudden there's a holiday on, on Thursday, and they're working four-day weeks, well... They don't work many days in a week, why, why could we not change that? To, okay, if they wanna work their four-day weeks, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. But why not, when there's a holiday in that week, what would be so wrong for them to go to, back to a five-day work week? What would, what would be so wrong to that?
Well, why are you asking them to put forty hours, then the rest of them are only putting thirty-two?
What do you mean?
If, if, if it's a holiday, say on Friday, and the courthouse is going to be working thirty-two hours that week, highway department, you're asking them to work forty?
No, you're treated just the same way as the highway. I'm saying you, you would, you wouldn't, you would be working, you go back to your eights. I, I'm talking about changing that week, just that week.
He's saying work four eight-hour days and have one eight-hour day as a holiday.
Right.
Like everybody else.
See, the state used to do that, I don't know if they still do, I can't answer that. I, I'm just looking at it for, trying to get some work done in a week, Jim, that's how I'm looking at it.
Well, there was a lot of them days our staff did work.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue that point, I'm not. I'm just stating fact, I mean, I just wanted to throw that out too. But what do you guys think of putting in their optional?
Um, that, I don't see when that changed, when the optional got taken out, that isn't noted in the new personnel policy at all, but I will, can I, we've talked about it, but not as department heads as a whole, but we've talked about it. About taking off the holidays that the governor declares. And sort of the feelings that I, that I get from everyone now is that, you know, we've gone, we go with, um, where we don't get raises, nobody complains, and it just feels like another benefit being taken away. So, there's that, you know, I'm just telling you what people think.
Well, I, I guess, I, I don't look at it as, as that, because what, then, I mean, it, there was a lot of, almost all the years, the county always got raises, I mean, there were a lot of...
Oh, I, I understa- I know that, I worked here when we were getting raises, when a lot of other counties didn't.
So the reason why, I even talked about the optional, I had nothing in my mind to have to do with, with raises. It's just, I just feel that it should be our choice as Walworth County.
What, what would happen if the governor says, with this COVID stuff, all right, everybody go home and we're gonna shut down completely? If we have no active cases here, why would we shut down?
Then I think you're, you're talking more, if she just shuts down everything, but then insists that you keep paying instead of putting everybody on...
Oh, it can't be our option.
Everybody on unemployment, then I think you're looking at what they call an unfunded mandate. But, um...
All we have to do is put in one word that says optional.
I'm not so sure that if the governor didn't, didn't shut the entire state down, you have an option.
Well, that's what I would guess.
Well, like she shut all the offices down and period.
Right, but she didn't insist that the counties or the cities did that. So, but if she, if she did like, I think they've done in some other states where they just close everything, I don't think you can, I don't think you have an option on that. But you, I'm not saying you don't have an option on these days that the president or the governor declares. I'm not saying you don't have an option on that.
But I mean, at least we, we, what's to say that the commission, that's given the commission that authority to say, yes, we will follow the governor, or no, we're not gonna follow the governor.
And I understand...
On some of these, that's, that's what...
I understand that, I'm just telling you that the employees look at it like you're just taking away a benefit. I'm gonna tell you that, to be perfectly honest with you, employee morale is not what it could be. And maybe we just don't need another, what feels like to everyone, like a little bit of another day right now. I'm not saying never, I'm just saying maybe it's not the best idea right now.
Well, we're making all these changes in the policy, let's get them all done at one time.
You know, that's not gonna happen ever, there's always gonna be changes to the name.
But I mean, we're, we're getting, we're getting everything else, alls we're looking to do is add one word to it.
Okay.
It's not saying that we're gonna make these changes every time. It just depends on what, what the situation is and what's going on. At least it gives us a little bit of an option.
And it's, I mean, it's gonna be totally up to you guys, I'm just telling you the feelings of the employees.
But I mean, it isn't even up to us, the way it's stated in there, it has, it's not even in a commissioner's hands.
Right.
It's one more thing that's just, I mean...
I, I know, I understand what you guys are saying.
I'm, I'm just gonna throw it out there since I'm staring at him in the doorway. Now, this doesn't even pertain to him, they gotta work all them holidays. So... I mean, I just, I just think that it should have never been taken out of there, the optional should have never been taken out of there, as far as I can see. Whenever, whenever that happened, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not, I...
I can't imagine that...
I'm gonna tell you that if I, when I think back, I think the first time that I remember ever getting an additional holiday was at Christmas time. And that was done, um, by Governor Dugard. And I, I really thought that when Governor Dugard was done, it wouldn't happen again, but Noem has continued that. That, so, it was at some time during Governor Dugard's term that I remember us, the governor saying, "These are the holidays for Christmas," and it happened at Christmas time.
I mean, I'm just gonna use a quote right from you, Jim, when we, in a holiday, I'm not, I don't know if it's one year ago or two years ago, but all of a sudden you go, "No, we might not have a choice on that."
According to our personnel policy, we don't.
But I mean, you even made that comment.
Yeah, so that is that way today.
Right.
That's what this says.
That's why I would like to see optional put back in.
So then I have to ask you this. If you don't intend to take it away, why do you want the word optional in there?
So if you have that choice.
Okay, I'm just asking.
That's all it is for, if, if, if and all of a sudden the commission feel that that should be, then it would be. But being your hands tied, saying that this is exactly how it's gonna be. It's obvious this county ran that way before, I wouldn't have this in my hand.
Right, and I, and I just can't tell you exactly when it was, the change was made to the personnel policy. But I, the first time I remember it was when Governor Dugard was, um, in...
Maybe that word just got left out of this policy at some time when it got revised and never was ever talked about. Cause it never was, I don't even recall, do you ever recall, Jim, optional when it was...
Ever since I've been here.
I, and I don't, I can't tell you...
I guess it might've just been whoever typed up these pages, optional might've just been...
You know, that's, that's why it's really important that we keep these changes, that's one of the reasons, cause then we could look back if we had any idea what year, so...
But we're not gonna waste all day on this, I mean, is there some...
I'm making a motion to, to put optional on, what is it, 712?
Yes.
Holidays.
It's on...
For holidays that it's optional that we do that, not mandatory.
For the president, amended holidays for the president of the United States for the governor of South Dakota.
And all other days proclaimed as legal non-working holidays by the President of the United States or the governor of South Dakota will be optional and at the discretion of the Walworth County Board of Commissioners? Something like that?
Yeah, no, it's exactly an optional in front of it.
It just has to say optional right in front of it, you don't have to change any other word, just optional.
Just put optional right in front of it, first word in there.
Yeah, I gotta put optional and.
No, just put optional, period.
Yeah.
In parentheses or whatever.
That's all it is.
Said parentheses, or just optional, period.
That's all it is.
Okay.
I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I have a second, sir.
Okay, I got a second, any more discussion on that?
I have something on that, as much as it does.
Go ahead.
A lot of you guys are making these changes, uh, so, let's just view Thanksgiving for example. My guys work, the only days they get off is Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day, possibly New Year's Day. So they work all these other days, but, like, the day after Thanksgiving, they gain admin leave, they don't get double pay. They, they, they gain it as nine hours that they can use some other time. But the problem with that is they're already maxed out on their leave. So, they never get to use it. So, is there a reason why they can't get eight or the nine hours holiday pay, just like you do on actual holidays? Instead of gaining it as time they can use some other time?
No, we didn't go to sleep.
I was, uh, Mr. Chairman, I was just looking at, I think in the same area that Becky was just talking about there, the 7.12, 1.1 workout holiday, when it talks about salary. Do we have employees that actually work on a paid holiday?
Oh, yeah, well, the jail, all done. You have the jail. We have the landfill.
Yep.
And the sheriff.
I just worked on Veterans Day, six hours. Cause of that mask COVID testing.
Okay, so then, according to that, then they get paid the whole time?
On actual holiday, but if you guys approve for us to have, like, Thanksgiving and Thursday and Friday off, and on Friday, they just gain hours they can use at some other time, they don't get paid double pay for that pay.
Didn't we, I would have to go back and study that, didn't we just change it so they either have to use that time or we're gonna buy it back from them at the end of the year?
Yes.
They can't, they can't bank it to the next year?
Yes, we did that under compensatory time last time.
Yeah, it wouldn't have to be included in that?
I don't, well, I'm not sure, but we could add the word administrative leave also, I think it just calls for comp time. She's saying it's not comp time, it's administrative leave, but we could add administrative leave into that. Anything over forty hours of comp and/or administrative leave would be paid out at the end of the year it was earned if it was not able to be used. But maybe we're, now we're getting into something where we maybe need to have a department head meeting and talk about this a little deeper before we just change it to date. And then have to go back in a month and change it again.
Did you hear all that, Becky?
It only affects the landfill and the sheriff's department.
Does it not affect the highway if they have to work on?
It affects the highway. Yeah, if they would have to work.
But we could add that easily to the compensatory time that we, you know, we capped at forty hours. It talks about if you have it used up to your forty hours at the end of the year, they will be paid out. We could put, add administrative leave to that also, that it will be paid out at the end of the year if it has not been used in the year it was earned.
I think that would make more sense.
I think maybe we could see a department head meet and, and type something up and, and then approve that.
To that effect?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're still talking now about this motion on the floor?
Right.
So, now we're...
This is a little different than this motion here, but...
Yeah.
I would think that if the department head, like Jim said, should do it together. And get that, word is a little different.
On both of them, or just the admin, admin hall, okay, okay.
Any other discussion on the optional? Here and done, roll call. Hogard.
Yes.
Schlomer.
Yes.
Martin.
Here.
Halk.
Yes.
Schilling, yes, motion passed. Consider motion to adopt amended resolution 2020-04. Is this yours, Kevin?
Yeah. Same one that, uh, that last time. How did your meeting go with the employees on it?
Um, they were all apprehensive about it with the four being the number, they don't believe that's gonna be sufficient. They didn't...
Why is that not sufficient?
They're worried about their availability to use their sick leave with the patient, and people still being able to cover, if there are stuff. So, with that being said, they asked for six as well, instead of four?
Are all these different?
There's three different, yes.
From the justice.
You have three different ones?
Yeah. One's four, straight out four, like you guys talked about, one is four plus two part-time, one is just straight six.
With no part-time?
With no part-time.
Under the same conditions that were otherwise proposed in the original one, Kevin?
I didn't update it, it's the same one that I had.
Pause. Did you add stuff we talked about, or did you do it, jail, that stuff?
And that one wage change?
Oh, no, I did not change that.
Okay.
I think we mutated it last time, but...
Yeah.
So that would be basically, this would be the same one as this full, for full-time jail.
Yes, uh, with no part-time. Should be. Yes, correct. Same as yours, except for they added two things and talked about yours.
And the part match changed a little bit, but other than that?
Yeah. Sorry to ring this, but enough of what they're getting paid, the sixteen fifty-eight, to what they're paid right now.
This is the way it is right now, it's six full-time and three part-time?
Two.
Two.
And one's, one's possibly like any one, it's...
One has left.
One has left.
One, one part-timer is, or is stuck.
The other part-timer is anything.
I would make a motion to leave it as it is, this one with six full-time and three part-time. Two part-time, well, this one here says three.
That's the, on the sheriff's side of it?
Oh, 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 okay. The way it is now, it's six part-time, two, or six full-time, two part-time.
Yes.
Do you have, if you, if you do go, or you, however you guys vote today, you know, if you do go with four, I do ask that you, uh, wholeheartedly consider, uh, the option of us changing that again, because if I start having issues, I'm gonna be coming back to you. Um, I did have a discussion with Scott yesterday, um, so I guess, I mean, not saying you guys wouldn't do that, but if you did vote to do that, yeah, I would have to have that option available.
Yes, Chris.
And if you do vote that way, I would ask that it be December 2nd again, so they have insurance till the end of December? If at all possible?
Jim, what was your?
I believe it is now six full-time and two part-time on the transport side. That's the hourly wage. Once we lose these people, they're gone. We aren't gonna be able to hire them guys back in March when we need more transport officers, they're gonna lose their jobs. You just don't go to job service and find somebody to jump in that car and transport prisoners. You gotta have training and stuff. Background checks and training and, and everything else that goes along with that.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
Is that the motion to, uh, six and two part-time?
Yeah.
I'll give you a second, man.
Yeah, I got a second, any more discussion on that?
Do you have a schedule set for these days on how you run it?
If you do the six and the two, or are you wanting it to change to an on-call basis, or are you leaving it the way it is?
I'm asking you, I'm not, I'm not trying to interfere on how you're running it. God forbid I would be accused of micromanaging.
Hey, I have a question, is it salary, or are they gonna stay with you?
Salary.
Okay.
Um, what Jim's motion is not. You, you want to leave it the way it was?
The way it is right now, I think we need to do that for a while to see... The way it is right now. I think we need to do that for a while and see what, run it this way for a little while, see what we're going to get into. Because this is all new territory for all of us.
Okay, so.
To control the overtime, I think we're going to have to put some of them on-call. To keep some of that bound down.
How can we afford seventy to eighty hours of overtime per pay period with six, six full-time and two part-time? We're still having eighty hours of overtime per period?
So, to, there's no way in hell that this county is going to be able to afford that.
When we pay four hundred and fifty thousand dollars going to our jail by your figures, you've got to be able to afford to pay our help for the hours they put in.
There is a way to do it.
Yeah, cut them and fire, or they'll lose them.
Yes, Justice.
If they're going to be salaried, then it's, that would be the option, using on-call. Deal. And do it that way and run it to where if there is something that comes up, they just get called in. I would still make it to where they know when they're on-call, obviously.
There'd have to be a schedule?
Yeah, there'd be a schedule. In my, I've not put anything on paper yet because I didn't know which way it was going to go. So, in my head, I'm thinking either twenty-four hour call or twelve-hour call because that's what they're doing now, it's twelve, so. Something I would figure out depending on the number of employees I have.
You haven't tried running anything for four or six or eight or thirteen or?
Going to happen. Right now with the six and the two, they're doing twelve-hour shifts, like I talked to you guys earlier, but they're paid hourly, you have to know that. So, they are getting the overtime. If you change the salary, it can stay somewhat similar with the same employees, it's just they won't be here, they'll be at home.
You're still having them over there right now, two people on on a shift doing nothing?
They are still sitting there?
Yes.
Until that's changed and then we're going to, that would put them, with that, with the one option would be putting them on-call and they would be at home. So, either there or at home, I guess, is the scenario. So.
Any other discussion?
I guess I got one other question, or is it, are you still planning to transport for everybody in the county?
Well, if, as long as I'm able to do it, I'm going to, I'm going to do it. If we run into times where we can't, then we can't. Because you've got to remember too, these people are going to be using sick leave and vacation also. So, that's all got to be figured out.
What about putting them on the door over at the hospital for a mental hold? Are they going to be babysitting everybody else's problems too, or are they just transported?
If they're, if their mental hold is us, that's ours. So, yeah, they very well could be put on that door.
Any other discussion? Here on roll call. Holgard?
No.
Slummer?
No.
Houck?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Schelling? I'm going to vote no. Motion failed.
So, okay, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to go to the four, four positions paid a salary.
Do you want to include the jail nurse?
Yes, I think that's the one that we had, yours was the addition to the jail nurse, correct?
Right.
Only Josh has that one all done up here, don't you think?
Yes. Yes.
That is one of the options.
I don't, I don't have that paper in front of me. I just, that's, I figured that was the one that we talked about last meeting.
It is, Marion. It's the same one that Kevin did. It's just in a format that we use. It says the same thing. With the corrections that are made in it.
Yes, Justice.
Um, Mr. Slummer?
Yes.
Are you going to entertain the December second start date to that, or what is your plan?
Now, what was that for?
So, they could retain insurance through the month of December? Like we did last time?
Um, I would do that.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I have a second.
You have a second. Any more discussion on that?
You guys are adopting our amended resolution, correct?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's our resolution.
Yeah.
Okay. I think the resolution has to be read.
Well, then I'll read this right, right, right away. Resolution WC twenty twenty dash oh four revised eleven seventeen twenty twenty. A resolution establishing the number of compensation of deputies allowed for the office of the county sheriff, whereas the Walworth County Board of Commissioners has deemed it necessary for the prompt dispatch of business in the office of the county sheriff at one or more deputies, jailers, and clerks to be appointed therein.
Don't make any conclusions.
Whereas, according to qualified law seven dash twelve dash nine outlines a procedure for fixing the number. Compensation of deputies in the office of the county sheriff now therefore be it. Result that the Walworth County Board of Commissioners fixes the number. Compensation of sheriff's personnel per SDCL seven dash twelve dash nine as follows for twenty twenty. Position sheriff, fifty, fifty-four thousand, three eighty-eight, sixty-two salary. Chief deputy, one full-time. Sergeant deputy, one full-time. Part-time deputy, three. Part-time positions, two at four hundred and sixty hours a year each to equal nine hundred and twenty hours. One at one hundred and twenty for a total of a thousand forty total hours available for twenty twenty. Transport officers, four full-time. Jail nurse, three part-time. PRN as needed. Administrative assistant, full-time position, two thousand eighty total hours available for twenty twenty. Compensation, chief deputy, twenty dollars and eighty-five cents per hour. Sergeant deputy, twenty fifty-one per hour. Part-time deputy, nineteen thirty-three per hour. Transport officers, range from thirty-four thousand, four eighty-six point forty to thirty-six thousand, four sixty-two point forty. Salary, no overtime. Jail nurse, thirty-eight forty-two per hour. Administrative assistant, fifteen ninety-five per hour. Be it further resolved that the Walworth County Board of Commissioners fixes the number and compensation of the jail personnel per SDCL seven dash twelve dash nine as follows for twenty twenty. Okay, you got a motion on the floor. I need a second. Any more discussion on that?
I got a question on that, Mr. Chairman. I guess part of the reading of that, how many full-time did it say in there of the, of the transport?
Four.
More full-time than no part-time?
Correct.
And then the next question I had on that is on the transportation. It says for the jail, should that, should that be changed to transport instead of jail?
Transport officers.
But I think right at the end it says be it further resolved some of the jail or something.
Compensation of jail personnel. That should probably change to transport personnel.
Because according to the guy at state, didn't they have to basically eliminate any pay or anything out of the jail?
You don't think that he prisoner boarding costs?
I thought that comes out of the, of the sheriff, no?
Not the boarding costs. Like what we pay to the other county jails will have to come out of the jail budget.
I think what they're anticipating, Becky, correct me if I'm wrong, is putting a line item in for boarding and keeping it all under sheriff. Is what they're anticipating.
Has anybody checked the legislative audit on that or other studies on that? Is that how they do it?
Everybody, I mean, what I know is everybody's got a separate jail budget, still.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. That's why I thought-
For the purposes of boarding and-
Their boarding is there.
Okay, I was, I was just, I was asking a question simply because I thought we, we said to eliminate the jail funds, but if that's the case, I'm a little proud of that. The next question I have is this resolution is all dated for the following as of, as of twenty twenty. Should that be for twenty twenty-one?
That would have to be a separate resolution adopted at the first meeting in January.
Okay, okay.
When you asked about the transport, the full, full-time, you said any part-time, I guess, you were asking, I'm talking to you, Marion.
Yeah, I, I thought when you read, I thought you said for full-time and so part-time.
No, I don't think I did.
There's a part-time nurse in there.
There's three part-time PRN nurses.
Okay, that's, maybe that's where I misunderstood it, that I was thinking it was part-time.
Yeah, that's right afterwards.
Okay, all right.
I guess Josh did say something there a little bit ago. I, I would hope that, I mean, a guy doesn't know what's really going to work. Jim said it, nobody knows how this is all going to work, but I would think that Josh would let us know that things aren't working very good, that it definitely would have to get revisited. I would, I would think everybody would agree with that.
My point is when we do this, we lose two valuable employees that are trained to do this now and, and when, when we have to go back and revisit it, we don't have them trained people on staff. They're gone someplace else.
Any other discussion on this?
Can we legally do this? I have a call wondering if, if this is law enforcement, if we can legally force our people to go to salary and no overtime. I don't have any idea.
I have to go to our sheriff on salary right now.
He's, he's Department head. I have Jamie, he isn't here. I was hoping, he didn't think so, but he hadn't checked into it.
Justin, you spoke with Ryan, but I don't think that he had any interest with it.
No, the way it sounds, he does not, because we base it off of getting paid every two weeks, so. One week if they get fifty hours, the next week they get thirty-five. If it is what it is, they get their salary. They're not optional to get the overtime. So, as far as what he told me yesterday, anyway.
I, just, I mean, it's just a personal comment. I would think as a transport personnel, for them, I mean, if, if they don't have to sit up there all the time doing nothing and to, you know, there could be weeks where there just nothing happens and they don't have part, any hours, but they're still going to get paid their full forty hours. Uh, no matter what. Then there might be weeks where all of a sudden you got a big push and you got, they're going to have fifty hours for a couple, three weeks in a row. But for them, I mean, it's, it's just a matter of knowing that they're going to get that full benefit all the time. And they may have weeks where they don't have thirty hours of work.
Not only that, I think their safety factor of having them be at home resting and then getting called out on the road instead of ten hours into a twelve-hour shift, then they get called out to go, they might be on the clock for eighteen, twenty hours.
Well, exactly, yeah, exactly.
For, so for a safety standpoint, it's way, way better to have them on-call at home.
Any other discussion? Not roll call. Holgard?
Yes.
Slummer?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Houck?
No.
Schelling?
I'm going to say yes. Motion passed.
Kevin, you're, you're not insinuating that I'm making them work in unsafe conditions, are you?
I'm just saying it's, it's easier for them to get rested up at home than it is sitting over here doing nothing.
Because I don't, I, I mean, I don't purposely do that, so.
I'm not trying to insinuate, I'm just saying.
I, I do worry about my employees. There's times I don't sleep, so.
I, I guess that's, I'll, I'll just butt in there a little bit on my opinion on that. That's what's, I think that's what's hurting us is when their, their shift is probably almost over and boom, they got to go. I'm guessing that's happened.
Oh, yeah, that's happened.
Somewhere, yes. If their availability to wait a couple hours till membership gets in, that happens too, yeah.
I can see your, but sometimes there's not that opportunity.
You want me to sign yours?
Well, this one's got everything on there the way it should. Yours does. Doesn't matter which one. They're the same because they're Kevin.
I'll sign them because you have all the signatures, everyone has. All sign yours. And then Becky can sign it when she's in the office, if you're all right with that, Becky?
And just to re-clarify, that is starting the second. Marion said yes.
Do you really need them to sit over here, two people on until the second?
I can adjust that. I just, as far as the numbers going down and that stuff happening, it would be till that day. But I can, you know, we can verify how they said that. That's not what you guys want.
Rule number nine, consider motion to advertise for a budget supplement for twenty twenty-one sheriff budget, two hundred and twelve thousand for transport officers with no meals and no overtime.
This is for next year's budget because you're going to have to move some money around anyway. Two hundred and twelve thousand that I came up with was a figure, the highest one that was on salary was about fifty-three thousand per year times the four transport officials, so I came to two hundred and twelve thousand to to put it in the budget for salary in the sheriff's office. with no overtime and I don't feel like they should be getting paid meals when they're out, like we got.
You know, we have to be care, very, very careful here, Mr. Chairman. I mean, are we gonna, what, what's the goal here? Are we gonna make this straight across the board? For everything, or is it, is it just my, uh, the transport portion? Cause there's a lot of things that go, uh,
if they stay overnight, that's, that's a whole different deal, but if they're just on their scheduled shift. Why isn't everybody in the highway department, everybody in here, and everybody else getting paid?
Yes, Jim.
Six point seven, it is a policy of the county that employees be fully reimbursed for necessary and reasonable job-related travel expenses. That's why we don't pay the highway department when they're on, on a, a blade, cause it says in our policy book, necessary and reasonable job-related travel expenses. We're gonna do this just for, just for the transport people, we're gonna do it straight across the board for a whole.
Isn't, isn't a transport job to be on the road? Present as their job?
And it, and it states here, the times for meals. They leave before five-thirty and return after eight o'clock and, and breakfast, lunch and dinner.
So if that's your job is to be on the road, you're gonna get paid to be, to do your job extra.
That's what our personnel policy says. If they're not gonna follow, we just will throw it in the garbage.
To me, Mr. Chairman, it's no different if someone's going to a conference for training. They are paid during that payment. It's, it's job required. Their tra, it's job required when they're on a transport. If this board would vote that way to take that away, I mean, and say they're gave the transport officers out in the sheriff's office, I mean, it looks like, it looks like this commission is picking on one end and I don't wanna see that. It should be straight across the board then, and that means auditor's office, assessor's office, uh, registrar, deeds treasurer, nobody gets per diem then.
If they stay overnight, they do.
What's the difference if they're, if they're on the road for over ten hours? And twelve hours?
When I go up here, I don't, I don't get meals and stuff to go down to a meeting up here.
You're able to.
I guess I, I consider, I don't get paid any extra overtime either. That's salary.
I hear that.
They're on salary.
I understand that.
Okay, so if they're on salary, just like I, if I go to Peter, still required to work forty.
Are you required?
They're, they're getting forty.
Correct.
They're not required to work forty, they're just getting forty.
They're being paid for forty.
They're getting paid for forty.
Correct.
So if I go to a meeting in Leola and I'm at the commissioner's meeting out there, I should have put in for, for meals and everything, cause I was there after eleven-thirty-one.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That's your thing.
I consider part of my job.
So are we, and this, this is part of their job also.
Then we should be paying highway and everybody else.
When they go to a conference, yes.
They're out on the road. They're out on the road for ten hours a day.
I guess what's the board wanna do, I guess, I mean.
Government travel.
You've heard my opinion and I guess if you, you know, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'm putting it back over to you.
Holy cow. I'd say it's part of their job. I don't see any difference between that and the highway part.
I guess with it being in the policy book, would it not be something that they would have the option to do if they need to get reimbursed? Some may not. Some may not put in for it, some may. Is that something that would be feasible or no?
That's the way it is now.
Correct.
I would put that on the discussion list, uh, the other things for the personnel policy handbook.
It's in the handbook right now, so, yeah, I would say it should be talked about in the heads. On how I wanna handle that for now. So on your motion, you want to exclude that right now, Kevin?
Oh, exclude the meals part.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, I need a second.
This is just to advertise for the budget supplement.
Correct.
Wouldn't that be for twenty-twenty instead of twenty-one?
No, because by the time we have to advertise for two weeks, get that back and then have another meeting, or the last meeting in December anyways, so, it's for next year's budget.
Josh?
That's gonna have to be revisited again after January. You're gonna have a whole, we're gonna have to redo this whole, whole thing all over again in January, Mr. Chairman. Um, there is more than meets the eye that, I don't know what's all encompassed into that two hundred and twelve thousand. If it's, but some of that stuff is gonna, like supplies, I'm only gonna have boarding, a few line items under the jail. Um, supplies and stuff?
This is just for wages. Two twelve is just for wages for the transport officers.
Correct, and my supplies is gonna go up because I'm using more gas consumption. That all comes out of my supplies and that's not within my current budget, Mr. Chairman, so that's why we're gonna need to revisit it again. There's some things that I don't think are figured in there. Cause I wasn't anticipating a transport to be taken care of. Obviously, now I do, but it's gonna have to be revisited in January. Again.
So that's, this is for Kevin, is twenty or twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
So nothing, this is, this is nothing for the rest of the year?
I believe that was done the last meeting, the two hundred and fourteen thousand advertised for twenty-twenty, was that not?
It was, we had talked about it, put up your motion on.
I believe it was.
There was no motion, because we didn't have a set price or a set dollar amount. So by the time we advertise for two weeks, that puts us into the middle of December, by the time we can act on it, if I act on it for one, for two weeks.
I, I thought you did do it for two fourteen.
I wouldn't have to look back, I don't remember either.
There was, there was not a motion there.
Cause I recall talking about it, I can't remember what we, what happened.
We keep talking about it, everything and nothing gets done, so, so I put twenty-twenty-one, so at least this part of it gets done for next year. You're right, there is other things. We're gonna have to budget for housing of inmates, we're gonna have to put gas in there.
Medical.
I know.
This is just one step to try to get something done around here finally. We keep talking about everything and nothing gets done. This is just one step to get something done.
But what are we, what are we fixing for this year though?
We just did it, we fixed the resolution. We did it by resolution to set the number of transport officials.
Nope, I understand that portion, but I'm talking on the budget side, Kevin, for the rest of this year. Because right now my transport officers all have to come out of the sheriff's office. According, according to the auditors, but I have, but we have not done anything with transfer of any dollars for this year to compensate for that and accommodate.
This year, when we do our year-end stuff, then we'll have to have all this budget stuff supplemented at the end of the year, pay all the bills off.
Becky, are you still on the line?
Yep.
Wasn't that the?
I'm the one that's looking for sheriff's department for this year, is it getting where you're gonna need to supplement it?
I'm guessing so, because I don't, I don't have that salary built in there.
We'll have to look at it.
It's gonna be supplemented.
We have to advertise that date before we do the supplement, so we will have time to fix it before the end of the year, but we need to have exact numbers.
Okay.
Yes, fit, Marion.
Uh, I think what Josh is talking about here, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, but gently, don't we, don't we do that, uh, towards the end of the year, like one of the last meetings, if we need to do some budget supplements and stuff? Now that we have the resolution in place to know the number of, uh, employees, we'll have, uh, have the ability to advertise that we gotta do a budget, or excuse me, a budget supplement at the end of the year to help supplement the sheriff's, uh, budget to help pay for that, that, uh, salaries. Uh, my, my, my thinking is in that case, we would just, we're basically going to have an advertisement out there, so when we get to the end of the year, we can actually do that budget transfer and get that budget supplemented to, to cover that cost for, for the remaining part of this year. The, the motion that I've seen, Kevin's talking about is basically for, just for the, for twenty-twenty-one on, uh, on the budget that we currently have set for twenty-twenty-one to get that changed around so those dollars can be transferred out of there and get things straightened out on that part of it. And that, and that's just for the salary part of it, because we know there's going to be fuel, we know there's going to be boarding, we know there's going to be medical, all that stuff's gonna have to be figured out.
Okay, anything else?
I guess that's, I mean, that's not how I understood it originally. I guess that, you know, that we are working on twenty-twenty, so I didn't go over budget. I don't like going over budget. Um, no, everybody tries to steer away from that. I know this is, uh, um, uncharted waters and it's something new that was dropped on my lap, so, but the whole idea is not going over budget, so I was looking more at a, as a budget transfer, so to speak, is what I thought we were doing, to move those dollars over, so I didn't go over budget. But if that's what you guys are trying to do, or on your end, I guess it is what it is and we'll, that's what we'll have to do at the end of the year. And yes, there's, we look at those options that toward the end, but, um, we have to stay on top of it and make sure that that gets done.
Josh, you and I can get together at the beginning of next week and go over the numbers and come up with the actual amount, so we can get it advertised.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, but I needed a second for that.
I'll second this.
You got a second. Any more discussion on that?
I think we go to the week to next year and do it all at once. I don't know why we're trying to suggest to, to do that for twenty-twenty-one now and twenty-twenty.
Any other discussion on that? Hear none, rule call. Holger?
Yes.
Flomar?
Yes.
Dave Martin?
Dave?
Hauck?
No.
Shilling, yes.
No.
Motion passed. Rule number ten, consider motion to approve purchase of trailer for inmate bowling for five thousand.
I believe that's the voucher you were talking about also, Kevin. Um, the trailer's owned by Charles Mauum, M-A-U-M. It's for the temporary housing to go out here on the courthouse, uh, property. Uh, Scott located the, the lines needed. Uh, there were some measurements and some, uh, facilities located the way it was.
Yeah, I was just gonna stand up so I can kinda just explain it a little bit.
The title that I have is obviously wrong, because the title I have is for twenty-ten Keskup Manufacturing Trailer. It's seven by ten.
Well, that's wrong. It's, it's bigger than that.
So, I got a picture of one here.
I think it came to twelve by thirty-three somewhere in there.
Well, according to this, it's eight by thirty-three, but.
I just wanted to give you guys just a little heads up on that. I had it and then you can discuss that, but I had this all located back here where Josh and I had talked about where it probably worked best. Uh, one thing a guy's gotta do though, a guy's gotta talk to the city. I mean, I know that water line's coming. You know, from the, coming from the west, the mains that come to the jail and courthouse. I personally believe it probably should be the one that went to the, probably to the new jail. I think that's the one to the east or to the, to the north, but anyhow, because the guy's gonna tap onto that line, but you know, there'll have to be another shut-off put in out there just to turn off that line because it is, uh, the county's, but still, cause there's gotta be a meter put in, in there, but we're still tying onto that line on this side, so just so, a guy has to work that out with the city.
Will you be talking to him?
I, I can. So I can explain that to him, and then I'd already talked about the sewer, a hundred percent positive that's what the sewer is too, but if we would stop probably on the north side of the town, at least then we wouldn't have to cross the natural gas, so. Anyhow, I just wanted to point some of that stuff out to you, but I can talk to the city if, if that's what you want.
That's fine. The, the purchase price, price was, that agreed upon was five thousand dollars for the trailer. Obviously, some things have gotten, um, some things have to be done to it. It's gotta be, have a separation wall and make the bathroom bigger and put some different doors in, not a pad, uh, one of the doors, there's two doors on the trailer. One's just a regular entry door and one's a patio door, uh, sliding door. That would come out and have something, put else in. Um, Dr. Zach starts, he's, um, starts construction, he's looking at, he's getting me a quote to do the barement, put that, that, uh, that separation wall up in there and make the bathroom bigger. Uh, we do have to make that so you can, it's eighty-eight compliant. Um, I did talk to him about a, a ramp and stuff that would need to go in there with, and steps bolt, in case we have to, we have that issue and ones in a wheelchair, if we do run into that. Um, so it's all things that we wanna look at. I don't have those numbers yet, but the actual purchase of the trailer was for, was offered at five thousand. Jim Hauck was there, Commissioner Hauck. Um, Scott was contacted, he was available by phone. Um, I did check with Deb on the assessment value and it was, it came in at five thousand. I did text that to Scott. Um, so I can't, I mean, like I said, that's what we were, we offered and what they accepted to get this process moving. And again, that's for tr, uh, temporary housing.
We also looked at the other one that's in, in the casca that they brought down. They paid thirteen thousand for it. And we'll have to do the same thing in that one as we do in this one. Because, well, they're set up to live in, entryway and kitchen and stuff. We don't need all that, we just need two rooms and a bathroom.
And, and the real construction cost that happened from starch does not include any moving costs, electrical, water, sewer, any of that stuff, so I guess we're all right.
That's gonna be with anything from that.
Yes.
Exactly. You said you talked to, uh, Quinter?
I did talk to Tim, he just, he said let him know when it, if it gets too cold where you can't dig or anything. He said he would run stuff over across. I did talk to Tim. He just, he said, let him know when, if, if it gets too cold or you can't dig or anything, he said he would run stuff over across the ground to make it work for us, for power.
When would you be looking at moving it up or anything? As soon as you buy it.
I did also, also offer Zach to back it in my heated shop so he can work on it in there, and tell them all about it. He has to try and get a roll-off dumpster. We'd have to do that probably anyway, anyway, wherever we put it. If you wanna tear that part in there where it's warm in my shop, he could sure do that. Do all remodeling on the inside, then pull it up and set it down.
Did he say at all when he would, would be able to start something like that?
I think he would tear the skirting off this afternoon if.
I told him it would be as soon as possible that he would be able to, and he said that's fine. He would get going on it as soon as the trailer's purchased and.
What were you thinking to move it, Wes? Can, can a guy just get a permit just to move it?
He said Charlie pulled it out from Wisconsin with a pickup. So Chad Howke said he could move it with his semi if, if he needed.
Yeah, you offered with your pickup?
I, I figured if Charlie can pull it from Wisconsin, I can pull it from there to my house.
This, this pickup isn't very big.
No.
Little half of it.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question regarding, uh, Kevin had a comment on, on the claims as far as the title. It sounded like the title is totally different than what the trailer we're looking at buying.
Yeah, it's, the title we have isn't this, isn't this trailer, so we'll have to try to get different.
Definitely have the right title here.
And I don't know if there's even a title to it.
Well, we know, we're not buying seven by ten.
A manufactured home, I think, has to have a title, because it's got, uh, it's got an axle system going down the road, if I remember right. Deb would probably know that.
It may be considered a park model, and they have a little different title thing to them, but I think we can get one. I looked up, he has a couple, um, titles that are potential to be that trailer. We'll have to talk to Charlie and, uh, just get the right title. It's just, he just grabbed the wrong title, I think.
Oh, it's just gotta be in there, that it's for a.
You sent another title there? It is, it's the same, it's the same one. It's seven by ten.
Copying the original.
It's not the right one.
And I think barring anything else, I think we can find a VIN number or something in that trailer, so.
Commission is, is looking at buying eight by thirty-three or ten or whatever that is.
I think it's twelve by thirty-three. We measured it. I know it's thirty-three.
I think it's eight.
I've been around.
Greg and I measured it.
One of those tiny homes type things.
You know how come I think it's eight? Cause when Greg and I were there, we measured it, we measured eight by thirty-three, and I said to Greg, and the reason that sticks out to me is cause I grew up, there were five of us, I grew up in an eight by forty trailer. So I remember saying that to Greg, seven more feet, that's what I grew up in, you know, so.
I'll make Martian's purchase the designated trailer that everybody is talking about.
The thirty-three for me.
Right.
I would second that.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor and a second. Any more discussion on that? I will.
I got a question to help, uh, and I think I'll, I'll just let everybody talking about it, it sounds like Sheriff and Commissioner Hope, you guys have looked at this trailer already or?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, and you're, you're comfortable with it or?
We gotta do some work to it to, you know, to make it useful for our purposes, but other than that, yes.
Well, then I will, I will check with the city too and, and make sure, the only thing that I'm worrying about is the water, so, and I'll, I'll get that to you, right, as soon as I find something out, Josh. Any other discussion on that? I'll go roll call. Hogard.
Yes.
Schlumberger.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Howke.
Yep.
Schilling, yes. Motion passed. Number eleven, consider motion to appoint Ski Book as veteran service officer for a four-year term. I have it so moved. Okay, I got a motion up on the floor. I need a second.
I'll take it.
Okay, you got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here none, roll call. Hogard.
Yes.
Schlumberger.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Howke, yes. Schilling, yes. Motion passed. Any old business? Big business?
You can have a date set for the, the head meeting, you know, these changes.
You know, I'll just get together with someone, see what date's gonna work the best now. I'll just get my phone call. Now that make a, take a motion adjourned.
So move.
You got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll take it.
You got a second. All's favor, say aye.
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 Motion passed.
Here's, uh, the deal for the trailer, but it's got the wrong title there.